Call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Recorded live on CDET's YouTube channel. First thing up is public comments. Does anybody have anything they want to comment about on or off the agenda? Anyone? Anyone? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 11th?
So moved.
Well, your second. Moving seconded. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Next up, consent agenda. This is for ratification of the bills list for 04-06-24 to 04-23-24. Meeting of 24,152,06 in the general fund. Eight hundred and seventy-four dollars in the open space fund. Seven thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents in the park and rec fund. Ratification of the bills for the period of 04-24-24, 05-03-24. In the general fund, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. The open space annual lease CPI agreement at 2.8%. Equivalent to 41.88 an acre. Recognized May 19th through May 25th is National EMS Week. Permission to transfer 130,000 from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. Permission to transfer 20,000 from the general fund to the park and rec fund. Knowledgement of Rick Bates resignation from the planning commission effective April 30th, 2024. An improvement, a proven of Joe Tilka to the planning commission effective May 9th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion, do I hear a second? Moving second. Any discussion by the board?
I have a question. Do we need a separate motion for the open space or is that all part of it?
That's all part of the consent agenda.
Okay, just checking.
No problem. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Next up, center region cog. You're on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Eric Norberg, Executive Director of the Council of Governments. And over the past few weeks, we've been assembling the draft capital improvement program for 2025 to 2029. We have a few opening slides that I'd like to touch on very briefly and see if there are any questions on that. Kind of helps sets the stage tonight for what we'll be discussing. As always, we're looking for consensus comments on the portions of the capital improvement program that the township participates in. So the set of slides that's in the packet as well as we'll run through includes a number of items listed there. So the first page really is just a table of contents. And if we could go to the next page, this one gets down more specifically into the township's share of different. There we go. The different programs that you participate in. So the blue bar is budget over the past three years and the current year and next year for the cog building budget for capital. The red is emergency management and the green shows library and purple is the planning and MPO. So the first three bars are, as I said, are actual for those years. And so now that we're into 2024, you don't have a share of the library capital any longer. You do have a share of emergency management for next year and a little sliver of the purple there as well for next year. Your obvious question might be, well, what happened from 23 to 2024? Well, there were a few projects scheduled for 23 that got delayed or deferred into 24. So we are finishing some renovations at the cog building. We're also working on some of the IT security improvements that were recommended. So some of those costs pushed from 23 into 24. So it would have been a little bit more even had those items and projects been completed in 2023. In 25, we have planned parking lot rehabilitation project that would mill off part of the surface and patch some areas where there's base failure and then do an overlay. So that's, that's what's going on in that chart. And then, Amy, one more slide if we could, please. The next slide shows in blue the total expenditures for half moon township on a sliding line chart showing over the past few years and into 2024. And then the orangish brown line at the bottom shows the declining percentage or portion in dollars. It just shows how you're spending less on the cog as you go into the future, as you've moved out of the library program. That's always an interesting trend line that other municipalities have asked us to share, so we wanted to share that. That's it for the items to share tonight. The rest are items of interest, but they're also in the full CIP packet. And as always, we ask the township to provide consensus comments on any of the items. And I'll be happy to answer any questions of items that are in the capital improvement program for next year if I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Norberg? I guess there's no questions.
Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, even if it was brief. Go home and have a good evening. Next up, Portman Total Fire Company ordinance request discussion. Who would like to lead that off?
So what I'm looking for from the board is what you would like to see in an ordinance, if you would like to consider passing an ordinance for the fire company request for billing, the billing. So I know it was mentioned the last meeting that the proposed one seemed too broad. So if there's something more specific you'd like to see and only see that in the ordinance, that's what I'm looking for feedback from you so I can send that information to the solicitor to draft something for you to consider at another meeting.
This is the one that we discussed about last month?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. When do you want these comments back?
By today.
Got it.
I think from their discussion, basically, we were all in agreement that the insurance company, that in the ordinance that the insurance company can, I don't know what the right term is, but pursue their, that the fire company can pursue to the assurance company payment for services rendered. And I think that was the, and we also talked about it, expanding it. Or in some of the ordinances that I looked at that you had sent out, they included any type of emergency management. So included EMS, fire, and I'm not sure if there was anything else that within the township our ordinance supported their ability to pursue payment from insurance companies. And I think that's basically what we want to have written down from what I heard.
I, I see it differently. First of all, the fire company requested this. And they requested it based on what they were told by their bill collection agency that that's what that bill collection agency want. I don't know who that is, but that's what the bill collection agency wanted. However, that alone does not convince me of the need or, or actually the effectiveness of such an ordinance. And I've said this before, I think we need to be careful about writing ordinances to cover things that I don't think are under our authority to cover. The other townships did that. That's fine. That's up to them. However, I think it's more of a, a state governance issue than it is a local. I don't see how a locality or local municipality can even enforce something like that with regard to national insurers.
I don't think there was anything in there. We don't have to have anything about enforcement. We just say that it's.
Well, there is an enforcement component and there wasn't enforcement component within the ordinance that was proposed. And the ones that the other municipalities wrote have an enforcement component in it. And I, I have a problem with municipalities trying to enforce the collection of payments from insurance companies for accidents. And that, and because the fire companies can in fact bill an insurance company. The EMS already does it. So to cover, to have a local ordinance that does, to cover something that doesn't need to be covered is, to me, is just an expense that, and I think it actually is a bit of a liability too. I think what we ought to do is a little more research before we go and write an ordinance. And what I would suggest is that we contact the Pennsylvania Insurance Commission and ask them about this particular issue. I was going to do it, but you know, I haven't had time to do it. And I'm not sure I'm the actual right person to do that. I think our office can do that. And ask the question, you know, is this something that we should be writing legal ordinances for? The other option is to talk to PSATs who provide services to the townships and ask them the question of what, you know, what is the best thing to do here? And I understand what they're saying and I understand what they think they need, but I'm not sure that that's actually what is needed. That's where I get concerned about writing ordinances to cover something that I don't think we have any jurisdiction or authority to cover.
My understanding when he came forward, he had very clear indications that the ordinance that they have in place, which is I think from Taylor Township, maybe one other as well, that it was beneficial in getting reimbursements from insurance companies. There was a couple of insurance companies that he had mentioned that had asked for an ordinance that supports having a reimbursement. And once they showed that, then it was much easier to get that reimbursement from the insurance companies. And I think that's, that's his goal for asking us for this ordinance so that they have some type of a documentation for when they get asked by insurance companies that they have a documentation that they can show for reimbursements within half moon township. And again, it's not, he's not asking us to come forward and do the enforcing. He's just asking for some paperwork that, that we support those reimbursements going forth. And obviously, it's been beneficial to them in the past.
What I heard was something there. I heard, I heard them ask for something because the people who collect the money for them on their behalf, whatever agency that is, requested an ordinance to do that.
Because they're more successful.
Based on, based on their, based on the, the collection agency or collection company saying that that's what the insurance companies want to see. What I'm saying is I'd like to have it right from the horse's mouth. Or I would like to have it from the insurance commission, yeah, this is a good idea. Or yeah, that's something you can do or should do. I'm just saying, let's be sure.
The billing company is requesting it. The billing company is the ones that are asking for it because it has been beneficial in the past for previous reimbursements. So I mean, they've got documentation that this has been beneficial. So they're just asking for one for each of the townships.
I think there's possibly a couple of things going on. I think we can adopt an ordinance and I, and I think it would help them. I don't, I don't know how much, I've read the second class township code a few times and some things are really vague. This is one of them. I, I think we're going to need to find out from our solicitor or somebody in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Maybe PSATs has information as to if we do have authority to do this. But I also understand too, you know, I think most insurance companies are not from central Pennsylvania. So if somebody gets in an accident and they get a letter from somebody saying there's an ordinance of such and such, every state's different. If the insurance company is out of state, they may think they're forced to do it no matter what. And that would definitely help with recovery if you have out of state persons. Just my personal opinion. I don't have a problem with the ordinance as long as the solicitor and everybody says it's legal. I think there ought to be, I saw in the sample ordinance that the municipalities set the rates on the ordinance. And so we would by resolution set the rate for accidents or whatever.
Well, we could.
We, we could, but if you don't, then there's, there's no teeth in it. So we're going to have to be something there. So that's, that's something we're going to have to consider. What is a fair rate? Obviously, you know, you can, if you had a vehicle fire, I mean, it could, you know, cost the fire company $25,000 with the emergency gear or whatever. Or if it's just somebody with, you know, hits a fence or something, you know, that might be a very little expense. So I don't know if there's a good way to expand that from one side to the other, you know, if there's a range that they typically do.
Amy, do you have, I don't recall any numbers.
I believe it was Mike said at the last meeting that the third party insurance companies have a fee schedule.
They do have a fee. I would, I'd like to see that.
Yeah. That'd be something to get for, for a draft.
But I think the, the big thing is just making sure that it's a legal thing to do and that we are entitled to do it because we may not be entitled to do it possibly. And I, I don't, you know, I'm all about helping fire and ambulance company. If that helps them, then that's great. I just want to make sure that we're not stepping over our, our bounds. And I know what Ron was saying about contacting the insurance commission because insurance is highly regulated. And we just want to make sure that we actually have the, the ability to do something about it or not do something.
Or is there something better that can be done? I don't have a problem with the ordinance being specific to the intent, which was to collect money from an auto insurance company in the event of a response to an accident. I did not like the expansiveness of that ordinance to basically allow them to bill anybody they want for anything, anytime.
I don't think anybody else was thrilled about that either.
Yeah, and I don't think that was their intent.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but.
We have to decide what's best for the township. And I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. We don't actually make things worse by our actions. And that's why I think it's important, it's prudent to speak to the solicitor, speak to the insurance commission to see if this is something that, and it may be common, but you know, I don't know that.
Well, it looked like it was common. They had a whole list of townships that participate.
Mr. Back, did you have an opinion or thought on that at all?
No, I'm kind of with the majority here. I mean, I, I think as long as it doesn't overextend its boundaries or whatever. I mean, I don't think we have a lot of auto accidents that they show up for. But if you stop and think about and lean this whole chemicals through here and stuff, you know, sprays and whatnot. So if there's a big major spill, that's, you know, somebody's got to stand up and say, look, you're responsible to clean this up, so.
Or at least pay for the emergency services responses.
Right, yeah.
There is, there, we have talked about hazmat at COC, about various situations where you have a hazardous spill. There are different authorities to come into play there. Okay, one of them would most likely be PennDOT and or other.
Possibly emergency management.
Yeah, and there is specific liabilities for the hauling of that stuff. Okay, so that's kind of, you know, that's different than an auto accident.
Right.
Okay, so, and I'm not sure that Port Matilda or Warriors Mark is going to respond necessarily to hazardous spill. They may provide fire police, they might provide some kind of service. However, as far as cleanup is concerned or containment, that's something that emergency management is going to get involved with potentially hazmat team from the, from county or even the state.
I know Warriors Mark's been out on a few hazmat accidents. I think one was an oil truck that caught on fire, fire or fuel truck.
If it's a fire, it's a little bit different.
Yep. So.
Dave, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I want to do one, and I did speak to the solicitor as far as whether you can do it, pass an ordinance or not. And you legally can under the second class township code. It's just, you can decide what is in.
Okay. Well, do we want to make a motion to have an ordinance put together and allow all the supervisors to have input? And we can bring that forward after the solicitor sort of jumbles things together?
It addresses the specific issue that was requested.
You just, you want to just stick to fire and ambulance at this point?
I think we should do our emergency services, yes.
Okay.
As a whole, not just fire company, but emergent, all of our emergency services. If we're going to do it, it should cover them all.
How do you feel like that?
Yep.
Chuck? Ron?
Well, not really, but I'll go along.
Well, okay.
If you're going to write one, you might as well write it. You know, I don't see the effectiveness of it for the EMS, but that's fine.
Can't hurt.
Okay. All right. We'll get that drafted, give everybody an opportunity to comment before the next meeting and we'll get it up to vote to advertise at the next meeting.
So is, are you going to send something different out then? Draft something a little different? Or are you going to wait for feedback from us to send a collective change out? She's going to ask the attorney to draft. Attorney's going to draft it, okay.
I don't draft it.
Okay. No, 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 I mean, not you specifically, but are we going to see something different? Or should we work with the one, the copy that we have for feedback?
No, I, I'll ask him to draft something different because that's pretty detailed and I think you're looking for something.
More specific.
A lot more simpler and specific.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
I think the specificity of it is, I believe, auto accidents.
Yeah, we're just going to limit it to vehicle accidents.
Traffic accidents, whatever you want to call it.
Yep.
Well, that might be a question for the fire companies. There have been, because there's been other fire companies that have used it too, that other situations beyond auto accidents where they've been requested to have that. I don't know.
But then we're back to, we're back to the slippery slope of covering all different things. And that is where I have a problem. That's where they go, that's where they went with it. They went to cover, they went from fire or auto accidents to, to fires to, whoever wrote the ordinances, I'm not having this discussion tonight. Whoever wrote the ordinances that we were given, the sample ordinances.
It was pretty broad.
That, that came, that sample came from the fire company, from the third party. They passed that out.
Right.
I don't remember what year. And they, the other municipalities took what was provided.
But that is very broad power.
I think, I think the types of situations can be broad to a degree. But what was important was that we just wanted it to be accountable to insurance companies in there. Because they, that's where they had other entities that could pay in that particular ordinance. But we just want it to be the insurance companies.
And the people that live here are already helping to pay for these services, so we don't want to double bill them.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion on the matter? Okay, next thing. Municipal lane pickleball nets and batting cage budget requests.
Okay, so basically, the gist of it is, weather has not been very kind to our netting here, we, between wind and rain and things. So I'm really just suggesting to the board that we purchase another batting cage net as well as two new pickleball nets with a frame. That way, we can keep them up, keep them dry, things like that, be able to roll them out of the way. And then at that point, then I can dismantle them and, and store them properly for winter time. So those, well, technically, three things should not exceed $2,150. So I was just looking for approval to, I'll create some...
Chuck, what about the tennis net?
So the tennis net was, actually, I discovered it yesterday, and then it was requested today. So I'm looking into some options for that.
I mean, should we increase the amount in order to cover that as well?
Uh, we certainly can. I'm, I'm not sure what exactly we can do tonight regarding this memo.
We can increase the number if we want, can't we?
Because this was the request.
Because it's advertised?
We, yeah, we, we'll need to talk about it at the next meeting, and that's fine if the board is in agreement that, that you want Chuck to get...
Why don't we approve this, and then...
Yeah, you can, you can request that he get prices for...
Go back at it, hit it again next month.
Absolutely. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Chuck, how old were the pickleball nets?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay, that's fine. That's good.
It was before my time, so...
Were they just stored outside in the winter, is that what the situation was?
So they're stored in a plastic container, basically. And what kept happening was the wind would blow it open before, and then until I realized that water would land the bottom of it, and it really deteriorated those nets very quickly. So...
They're at least four years old. Might be about five.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all good.
So hopefully, going this route, we, we have a little better life expectancy out of it.
Is that the same material as the tennis net, or not?
I believe so. To, to me, it seems that way. Yes.
I think we're gonna need to replace that one as well.
Yeah, more than likely. Do I owe your motion to allocate $2,150?
So move.
Okay, move. I'll buy a second. Second, okay. Any other discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the board does want Chuck to get quotes...
Price for the tennis net for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Relocation of municipal lane recycling bins.
Back to the original location, right?
Back to the Ira Lane from municipal lane.
Yeah, I feel that she would move back to Ira, because of, there's an area there, because working over here for a couple of days, grading this road and stuff, seeing the volume of traffic, because this road's narrow anyways, one has to stop and let the other one go by, and then this intersection up here has always been bad. Fortunately, nobody's got run over yet.
I feel bad for the guy who's driving those big trucks that gotta get in and out of this entrance.
Well, Chuck talked to the driver, and he, he kind of agreed that it would be nice not to pull out of here with a loaded truck. And I talked to maybe a handful of residents in the last week or so, and they all thought it was good because there's good sight distance down there. And we talked here the other day about maybe expanding the paved area, so when the guy comes with an empty, he can back in and drop it and move over and pick a full one up and drive away, not drop one out on the street. You know, keep moving them in and out, have, make a little bit more room downhill so that he's not tying up traffic or setting out in traffic.
You got the space over there to do it, I guess.
Yeah, and like Chuck said, build a nice privacy fence around it so wind doesn't blow things out of there. And probably put a camera on it like everything else is so that people don't dump the trash in there.
That was the main reason for moving it before, correct? Was people dumping?
Ah, there was some residents that had a problem with it. But yeah, there was people, people letting their trash behind. And there was always a, what, trail cam there, I guess, on a tree or something.
Yeah, it sort of sounded to me like one of the issues was, they would fill up, I don't want to say fill up rather quickly, they would be constantly full. There has been some changes in recycling staff that has had a little mindset change there, and they've been swapping them out a lot quicker. So it's, it's a little, little easier to make sure that recycling goes into the bin and not next to the bin.
Yeah, 'cause I did hear recently that these out here are often full when people are coming, so that would be my only concern, is are we getting them swapped out enough?
They swap out at least once a week.
Okay.
So I will say that from what I'm seeing, they are getting changed very quickly.
Yeah.
A lot better than once then in the past anyways.
Yeah, well, the great thing is they're being used that much, so...
Oh, absolutely, there is...
They're definitely getting swapped out more frequently.
Okay, yeah.
Our recycling rate's pretty high in this township.
Yeah, it's great.
Which is good.
Oh, yeah.
As long as we got someplace to put it, so...
Yeah.
This is kind of a great problem to have, where increased traffic.
Will that also give us an opportunity to add some more parking?
It would, because we're not, by taking them out of the parking area, we're not expanding the parking lot, we're just gaining our spots back.
Recapturing.
So it's kind of, you know, we're within those confines.
There's a couple other things they're gonna leave up there, too, so we can even make more.
Yep.
Well, I guess, with all said and done, there's two sheds are leaving.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully very, very soon.
And the sand bin, once you get room.
Yep.
So that's gonna open up quite a bit up on that end.
Yeah, so hopefully alleviate some problems.
Yeah.
Is there anything else, anything else that we have to do to make that happen? As far as, what do we have, do we have any prep work over there to do?
Yeah, there will be some prep work, so there's gonna be some planning involved in that.
Okay.
Probably add a piece of pipe down, downhill there, and then add blacktop to it so that there's room to, like I said, expand it like it is at the shop. Because out there, the driver doesn't have to switch them, he, there's room to back in, drop one, pick one and leave.
I assume you want to get that expansion done before you move them over?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So is there any...
There again, throw it in the mix and, you know, make it happen.
Just a motion to...
Yeah, just make a motion to authorize the expansion of the parking lot.
I moved the authorization, the move of the bins to the Ira Lane location and associated work to accomplish that.
Second.
Moving second. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got your mission.
I think it'll help.
It'll take some of the traffic off of this road.
Well, now, it's tough getting in and out of an intersection, you know.
I think it's safer of accidents.
That's my feeling, is it's a lot safer in that intersection. I mean, it's, it's nice wide, there's lots of sight distance. I mean, I understand there was concerns in the past, but I just, I feel like if we do the expansions and, and make sure that it's a very convenient, safe space for people getting out of cars, I feel it'll work well.
I think we have 110 or 120 feet of right-of-way over there on Ira Lane, which is unusual, but that's township.
It is very large, I don't, I can't remember the numbers. I did just look at plans recently.
Yeah, well, there was actually a lot there when they built the road, and so when Paul Smith turned it over, we got the entire width going up through there.
Just in that section of Ira?
Yeah, goes, it goes up about to where Chanel Drive cuts off to the left. It's pretty good width. It's a good thing we got it, so...
It depends, but the grass is growing all the time.
Yep.
Ask, ask the guy that comes off the hillside with the mower a couple of times.
It's been interesting.
I, I gotta tell you, that intersection prior to the redo in the nineties was really, Chuck, you probably remember how steep that was coming down on the 550.
Yeah.
So it's, at least for the drivers, it's a lot safer.
Oh, yeah.
Can't, can't say about the mowing though, but...
We deal with that, it's okay.
All righty. Township reports, treasurers, secretaries, and roadmasters. Anybody got anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
And treasurer's not here. Authority boards and committee reports, anything to add, take away.
Dave, the only thing I'll mention is, it's been in my last two land use and community infrastructure reports, is that 24 into 25, the comprehensive plan for the center region is being updated, because it was last updated, I think, in 23. So there will be things that people will hear all year, there's gonna be different surveys happening, there's gonna be different community engagements that require to solicit information regarding center region growth and what people want to see here and there. So I'm just kind of getting that out there.
Okay.
There's already a, a transportation survey out there that I think closes soon that would be good for people to go out, if you go to the Center Region COG site. It's out there, and I also have links to it, I think, in my report. So just, that you, people will be hearing more about this all year, so I just wanted to, to mention it.
Oh, people are surprised, because that is a big deal for us.
The comprehensive plan, yeah.
So... Buddy, have anything else?
Well, I could provide a brief report for the upper political half in COG since we didn't have the meeting till Tuesday night, and we had to have the reports in to be published with the advertising of the meeting on Tuesday. So we have a meeting Tuesday night. There, the financial, we did review the financial reports for the minutes. Jay Dean got there late, so she did give, give a COG treasurer report. Patty also got there late, and we did review the reports that were provided for the meeting. Township municipal awareness, each of the municipalities gave a brief summary of things happening in their townships. We got to the EMS presentation by Mark Lively. There's 979 memberships to date, 20.5% return. I did not, and I wanted to get it, but I did not get it the, the total dollar amount. But it's, it's gotta be pretty far up there, I would imagine, in the $90,000 range, but I didn't get that information. So that's something I can report on for next month's meeting, which I'll also be reporting June's upper political half in COG meeting for our next supervisor meeting.
All right.
So it'll occur in plenty of time for our next meeting.
If you talk to them, can you see if, if they're about where they expected to be on memberships?
Yeah.
And, and see how they're doing. I mean, you know, if, if it's down and we need to push or get the word out, we need to do, do something.
But the one, the one comment that Mark made, did make, was that 20.7, 24.5% return is a very high return, considering the average is somewhere in like the 17 to 18%. So we're above that. And, and also, I want to point out that 80, like 80% of the responses are from Half Moon Township out of all five municipalities. That is one point that he made, that...
80%?
Yes, mhm. So...
Good for us, lucky to be 100.
A lot of, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the support comes from our township, so we had the fire, fire chiefs report. There was a lot of discussion, there was discussion about treasurer's position, and there was a, one, a couple of items that they talked about. They needed new equipment, an approval from the COG board for, to purchase new equipment, and also for roof repair discussion. That was $4,100.
The ambulance or the fire?
Fire company, roof repair. Yeah, so the, but going back to the EMS briefly, the new ambulance is in service. The diesel is out of service for some mechanical issues. I think the gas ambulance is back in service.[1774.88]